Councilmember Swanson will have the option to give us an indication of his thought. And we'll leave it to the pledge of allegiance, Councilmember Swanson.
My thought is neither patriotic nor spiritual, but just a recognition of the all the efforts that have been done by neighbors and friends. As we've dealt with bits of flooding and creeks rising and water coming from places that we've never seen it come from. It's been pretty amazing to watch the neighborhoods come together with just, you know, in a heartbeat, people are there. In some cases, you make a phone call and 10 minutes later, you have 50, 70 people that are throwing sandbags. It's it's a testament to the kind of community that we live in. Will you join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Swanson. We'll now enter into our consent agenda. First thing is I'll call for any conflict of interest need to be disclosed regarding tonight's agenda. I don't see it. The latter item number two. This is a discussion or action to consider the April 11th. City Council meeting minutes. Any comments on those minutes? All right, I don't see any. To approve the April 11th, 2023 City Council meeting minutes. Councilmember Swanson, do we have a second? Second by Councilmember. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving these minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now move on to item number three, which is a discussion to consider the April 15th, 2023 City Council meeting minutes. Do you have any comments on those? That's my Valpens piece.
Yes, on page eight of her minutes. It says a resident, no name given. I went back to the YouTube recording and I can confirm that that resident was Bryce Dalton. So just note that in the record. And then also after that, it says Chad Jensen, North Ogden resident, made a comment. It actually was not Chad Jensen. It was Tim Jones. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Dowpas. So any other corrections? See, now we have all of them. Do you have a motion to approve those minutes?
Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes of April 15th, 2023, City Council.
Can you have a motion, Councilmember Seven? Do you have a second? Second, thank you, Councilmember Dowpas. Are there any further corrections or discussion? Seeing now, all in favor of approving the April 15th City Council minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? There are none opposed. Motion passes unanimously. I will now hear from Dylan. He's going to discuss the conditional acceptance of the Spring Meadow subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Spring Meadow subdivision is down at the bottom of the city. First approved in 2019. 14 lots, most of which that are already built. There's one building lot left. And there was an extensive punch list and improvements that had to be completed before doing the conditional inspection. They included the temporary turnaround landscaping, the detention pond, and extending the improvements across lot eight. Those have all been completed and they're up to the city code and standards. So there's the recommendation to give them conditional acceptance.
Dylan, to refresh my memory, is this the subdivision that we have the wetlands issue with that's still waiting to be resolved?
Correct, and I believe Eric Casterson, the city engineer. He's already been in communication with Hollis Jinks with the Army Corps and assured us that there is some problems with the wetlands, but it's not on the city. They'll go after at a later time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Dylan, Council? All right, any other comments, Dylan?
You guys are this like, we always say this is the easy part, but you got to come to the meeting a couple of weeks ago that wasn't as easy as this, so.
So it balances out, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you guys are more than welcome to come to those as well.
That was an interesting meeting, wasn't it?
It was.
But you did good. You did well. All right. So Dylan has asked us to motion to approve conditional acceptance of the Spring Meadow subdivision. If there are no further questions, Dylan, I would look for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we act upon a conditional acceptance of the Spring Meadow subdivision.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Second by Councilmember Seven. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dylan, for your good work.
What a time, thank you.
All right, well, then to our active agenda now. I will seek public comments. Just to repressure, if you'd like to comment, step up to the podium, state your name. No problem. I ask you to limit your comments to five minutes. As I stated before, that saves the mayor from interrupting. John, if you would watch online, let us know if there are any comments there. So now begin public comments.
I'm Keith Ashdown, a resident of North Ogden. And when the weather warmed up, I started walking my grandson to school continuously. And I think there's a safety thing I'd like to show you. Right here on Pleasant View Drive, 300 East. I would like to see if we could get a school crossing system put there. Because we've walked off Pleasant View Drive, like we have a lot of cars come up there and then turn west. And there's no crossing signs or anything. But that's a very busy intersection for these kids to be walking through. I would just like to ask you guys to look at the possibility. I don't know if there's a law that says it can't be so far away from the school or any of that type of stuff. And it's not any more cars that'll stop because when I get to Washington Boulevard, there's a lot of cars that don't stop. But I would like to see that crosscar put there, you know, that I think kind of said like a ladder that says they have to stop no matter what till they get across. I just a safety comment that I'd like you to look into.
Okay, John, can you make note of that?
Yep.
I know Dave's here. Let's see Chief tonight, but let's take a look at that and see if there's anything we can do. You know, with the safety issue there. Thank you.
It's not that I want a crossing guard, just a crossing wall.
I was thinking about hiring Councilmember Swanson to be the crossing. I guess I have. All right, thank you. I want a sign and a whistle. Okay, so we're good. All right, any other public comments this evening? John, do we have anyone online?
Nope.
Okay, this is a reminder, this would be a good time for those who like to comment on anything on the agenda. I know it's difficult sometimes. There's questions during the discussion by council, but now would be a good time to make sure that the council considers anything that's on your mind as we have discussions, so. Okay, I don't see any. We will go to item number six. We will have a presentation by the Budget Review Subcommittee. Just to repressure, they, this committee was formed excuse me, put together by the Audit Committee. And they have been in a meeting looking at budget items and they have some comments tonight after their review, so we'll be making that presentation this evening. Okay, let's start with Doug and Chris, and we'll go with Sandy.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Doug Anderson, North Ogden resident. As we all remember, on the ninth of August of last year, a truth in taxation meeting was held. 103 citizens attended either in person or on Zoom. Forty of us spoke out against the proposed tax increase. None spoke in favor of it. Nobody. Toward the end of that meeting, a motion was made that the citizens, that a citizens committee be started to see what could be done to reduce expenses. Several others volunteered or were appointed to join the effort. In our meetings, many ideas were brought up. All were given due consideration. Some we thought were good enough to become part of our recommendations tonight, while others were voted down. But all ideas were heard. All of these ideas are included in the packets that I trust you have been given. We've given packets each of you. Thank you. All of these ideas are included in the packets that you have been given, whether or not we voted to make them part of our recommendations. Perhaps an idea that wasn't good enough today might be more applicable next year. Realizing that this committee has no actual control over money that is spent, only the power of suggestion. We offer the following recommendations, leaving it to the City Council Director. Chris.
Your Council, Chris Bulber, North Ogden resident. It's a wonderful opportunity to brief you on the rest of this with Sandy cleaning up all of the mess I think. So as we went through the outline, basically, we're going to talk about what we went through the budget process and then our overall impressions and then recommendations. So basically, what we're talking about here is what we did. We went through the entire budget process, training. Jamie took us through kicking and screaming with John and some of the other council. Trying to figure out how the city's budget is run, how it's organized. We went through a whole bunch of things. As you know, there are yellow sheets, which, you know, weren't really yellow, but had all of the little detailed listings of what each department went through. Obviously, all of the public information with the financial auditor report, all the breakdown of the budget with years comparison, prior years comparisons. That was really helpful to see what trends were and things like that so that the committee could figure out what things would look weird, I guess that would be the basic thing. We also looked through each department head. And then they went through in, I don't see. It was painful sometimes to go through each line, but really looking through and understanding each line was important. And they did explain any increase or decrease, which was really important in my opinion. So really, the biggest thing about the overall impressions, and this is kind of a preamble to recommendations, but it's city budgeting and I'm trying to figure out how revenue comes in and you have to budget against it. It's not stable. We have, as Councilman Swanson basically, year to year and month to month, sales tax fluctuation. And we hear that and see that if you come to the council meetings. And then we talked about the grant money, which, you know, we hope for, but are never certain. And then we see, we have talked to a lot of the city employees, especially department heads, where they have talked about a lot of the reductions that they've come up with. So many incentive or initiatives have been very awesome, really combining admins into different things. The the cool thing was getting a street legal lawnmower. I think that was something that, you know, kind of tweaked or kind of impressed us, you know. And then cross-training between departments. So if someone decides to expand or honestly, if someone's not available, all of a sudden you have a water guy that could do something else. So that, I thought that was very impressive, so. And then also looking forward, I thought that was something that, you know, obviously impressed all of us too, is that it's not just looking at the current budget, but also anticipating what's in the future so we don't have any unbudgeted expenses to worry about. But the big things that we did see, which are, I'd say unfortunate, but something that we couldn't really deal with, were things that are past three factors. Not something that the city can control, the taxpayer can control, nobody can control. It's coming at a higher level from state or county fees. We're talking about, you know, the garbage, the tippy fee that people are aware of, keeps going up. The county elections, which seem to be going up every year as well. And there's some other county services that just you don't have any control over much. It's unfortunate for a city to can deal with because it's just, we have to deal with it. And then one of the biggest things obviously is right now with inflation is the insurance, the employee benefits is not going to go down ever. It's always going to go up, and then you have to guess how far. So those are the things that we worried about or not worried about, but we had to come to understand. And the biggest thing, not biggest thing, but when we came up with recommendations, which you'll see, there's a lot of them. I mean, if you go into the backup, which I'm not going to brief, but there's a lot of them, so. And but we did majority vote because if it wasn't unanimous, I think we would have had only a few. So we had to kind of go through that, so. Anyway, so under the good stuff, which is the recommendations. So we kind of split it out into four general areas. One, savings that we could quantify, put down on paper, understand what the true cost was. A general, we couldn't really come up with a true value, at least in the short time that we had, you know, with more time, we probably could have. Savings neutral, meaning either they were recommendations or something that you were, the city's already doing, and they basically keep it up. And then obviously cost increase, which for a budget committee that was supposed to reduce funds, that kind of weird, but I think all of us understood that there was some thoughts that we had to put down on paper to make sure that was something overall that as we briefed us, that everybody needs to understand. And then obviously, like I said, that presented today, everything in backup is every single one that we came up with, so. Okay, so the first one, quantified. It's not kicking people in the teeth, but basically stick to the budget, don't add costs. Fairly simple, but as we noted, that there's quite a few things. This is all based on our, you know, try to make as well as we could the 111K, but what we thought it was. So that's kind of a key one. The sounds, sounded like it's a part and part another controversial issue with the donations. We also were, you know, maybe right sizing the need and also reducing the overall scope depending on what the overall end game is on that. So that's our second recommendation. The final one is to remove or return, whatever you want to call it, the flock cameras. As you note there, if you look at adding that all up, you know, you're still pretty good chunk of change, but that's what the committee had come up with for quantifiable. For general, obviously, the fiber optic was something that we were debating on, and and I think it's a good idea, is if there's something that competitively that to outsource between all of them to try to get a competitive bid. Another good one I thought was idle free. Something that you can implement as a policy. Something that may already be begging enough, you have new enough cars, they already do. So but something looking to obviously, with the continued high interest rates that are going to keep going up. Maximize that interest income, which I think you guys are doing awesome. And then BYOB, bring your own beverage to any of these council meetings. That was something we noticed in just minimizing bottled water and environmental impact, so on that one. Okay, so cost savings neutral, as you know, some of these guys are doing. So review the depreciation law. Basically, we've seen what you guys are doing, but the major acquisitions, big trucks, big, big things that are very expensive. Required depreciation to pay for in the future, and I think that's one of the things that we started doing well as a city collectively. And then the triage of city budget, I think that was something basically when we're looking at what could happen in the future and then some type of a crash that you know, we understand that the city maintains a ready-to-fund and continue that practice. It's something that the committee, you know, highly encourages on that. And then honestly, there's all these free things from Rocky Mountain Power or the gas company to prioritize maybe possible building upgrades that as utility bills go up and up, that would save in the future, even if it might be cost neutral. Something that's just expensive to buy early on. But in the end, they save money. Maintain or retain all the expenses to avoid. We went around and around on this, to be perfectly honest. HR department has things that they do and it's not an unlimited budget, but it's a budget that we can struggle to kind of understand better. But as a lot of people understand that retaining employees is better than hiring new and training new. And that's the biggest struggle is to have added costs, all of that. It's going to drive added costs, and so maintaining what that budget was, I think, was something that we were asking or recommending. Let's see, so the biggest thing, and I think we're doing that as well again, is the grants. Trying to minimize what we pay as a city for awesome projects that we want to continue. I think that's one of the biggest things. Is because that's a big chunk of money every year. And then the transfer of that sort of segments, we wanted to make sure that continued even with your new responsibilities, I try so anyway. I think that's a good thing too, because that'll offset outsourcing all those minutes. Okay, the best part, cost increases, right? No, really, I think the biggest part of that was to understand and the thing we come up with that is that for the first one is to consider a very specific City Council meeting to discuss property taxes, because that was one of the things the committee, you know. We understood it because we had, you know, thought about it, worried about it. And so that's the kind of thing that, you know, to understand where it goes, where it comes from, what it does. All the committee members didn't understand the budget at all until we went through that training. So to be honest, I think that's something that would help the citizens to understand what's going on. And then obviously with police department, that's one of the biggest costs is them, and then obviously balancing as people have noted, national average versus what we tout as response time. Got to balance that to as we get a bigger city, which is gonna happen. So that's it, I think.
She's standing behind me yet, nope.
Andy Paul, right. I just want to list who the members of our committee were, so you all are aware of that. It was Doug Anderson, Brenda Ashdown, Glenn Owens, Chris Bulber, Clark Jensen, Randy Wynn, Steve Thompson, and Nate Russler. And I would just like to say for the majority of us, if not all of us, the most gratifying aspect of our undertaking was seeing how little was actually in the budget that could be cut. The department heads determined what they needed to do their jobs and the most cost-effective way of getting it. It was what several of us were expecting to see and we were not disappointed. So thank you all, department heads, for a job well done. And there are specific people we would like to thank. Individuals who were instrumental in helping us carry out our objectives. All the department heads were exceptionally prepared and helpful. We're grateful to the mayor, Councilman Swanson, and other council members who attended our meetings. Scott Hess, thank you for always being willing to step up and help us. Jamie Jones, John Call, and Dave Espinoza certainly went above and beyond. They patiently and thoroughly explained the budget process over and over and over. Lastly, we'd like to thank the City Council for allowing us to participate in this process. It's been enlightening and enjoyable. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
What do you see? Council, do you have any questions for Sandy? Councilmember Barker.
Are you willing to do it again next year?
Sure, I thoroughly enjoyed it. I learned a lot. And at the beginning, I did think there's not, because I come to the meetings, I know sort of, I mean, I'm definitely no expert, but I sort of had an idea of what was in the budget and I knew it wasn't full of a bunch of junk, so that was great to see that the department heads are are considering the citizens when they spend the money, so.
Anyone else?
Thanks. Oh, yeah, sure.
Can you recruit some different citizens next year? We want to spread this knowledge around.
We, at our last meeting, we did talk with the mayor about that, and and I think we've agreed that probably having a few members remain, just so it's not a new process, but definitely to get other citizens involved would be great.
Fantastic, and thank you so much for your service. Thanks for having the patience and sticking through, and it is, it's complicated and it's hard and and if you're not, you know, you don't love accounting. Well, that's why, yeah, I try to explain it to people and I see their eyes, it's clear. So thank you. Thank you for taking the time. Thank you all.
Yes, I really appreciate it, and as you said, Sandy, this was some extra effort by our department heads, and I think they learned a lot and it's good to interface with the citizens, so let me express on behalf of the entire council, well, thanks for your time and your concern about our city. So you'll read in my article this. Okay. Anything else? Any other questions, Council?
I want to thank the committee for going through that process. It was many, many meetings that you guys spent. I watched all of your meetings, whether it was live or after the fact. So I'm very in the loop with what was discussed, so you know, I just really appreciate that you took the time to be involved. It was really cool to see.
Yeah, forget our friend Jamie Jones, who had to, she's the overseer, putting all the hard work. Giving us to a red. Not quite done, are we? All right, we'll now move on to item number seven. This is a item Councilmember Barker would like to discuss with us. Regarding the use of the North Ogden Park tennis courts.
So Dave's going to help note this. So in the last week or two weeks, we found out our Longview pickleball courts are not going to be done. Eric told me yesterday that earliest they could be done would be the middle of August. And so hopefully we had, we repaint lines on these pickleball courts and then, or on these tennis courts and add two pickleball courts where that one tennis court is. And then the other options are whether we put up nets or we, Eric showed me some rollable nets that we could leave there so you can roll them out, we need the tennis net up. This one kind of like council's thought processes. My thought is if we do painting like this is pretty inexpensive, we get nets up there that are less than $200 a net. And then we can actually see if people want to pick the ball courts in North Ogden, or if we'd rather have tennis courts and see what's getting used more, we'll see what's getting used more.
Is that statistical?
Nope. It's a thought process. So I don't.
And I was just going to add, yeah, so Eric, Eric was able to draw this up. You know, the pad size that's at North Ogden Park is almost the exact same size that we're going to be building at Longview, so we knew we could fit two on each side, and so at first we drew it with four and then we figured, you know, maybe scale back, leave a tennis court and put two pickleball courts and see what, or see how it works. If it's something that we do want to do permanently, you can see where there's the proposed fence that will go in between so that that the tennis court is, you know, secluded and it can be used independently from the two pickleball courts, but.
So Dave, do you think two pickleball courts will handle the tournament that's proposed for fourth of the, I mean, the week of the first day of July?
No, and I think they've planned on renting the courts from Pleasant View City, so they've made an agreement with Pleasant View City to do that. But this was just to, you know, looking for, you know, we're getting a lot of people getting excited for the pickleball courts, so it was something with. But this was just to, you know, looking for, you know, we're getting a lot of people getting excited for the pickleball courts. So if this is what we want, we'll get them.
Okay, so we did decide to rent those from Pleasantly, the courts?
That's what they decided. I, I had, well, we had a proposal that we could put four courts on this easy, but because the issue here is that.
I am, nevermind.
I don't like being hurt. No, so the main issue is the nets that they like. If we did this, it would be a temporary style that if anyone plays pickleball, y'all have your outdoor net. It's not the same regulation that had the chain going through the middle and the sads and they want that at Pleasantly. That's the issue. It's going to Pleasantly, not here. But a lot of that play outdoor do have their own net and it's not.
Okay, so your question would be tonight then, Councilmember Barker?
Um, I was actually thinking if we're gonna do it just temporary nets, why if we don't just paint four courts there, but this is why we wanted to do what the council's thoughts are.
Okay, let's start with Councilmember Swanson. Where would the nets be stored?
So that's, that's the question. So there's.
Because if you leave them there on the course, they'll be gone within two months.
There's, there's a few things that we could do. There was different ways that you could do roll up ones, you could drop nets. That was our biggest concern is if you leave them there, somebody's taking them away. We've said that you can rent, you know, there was a proposal, maybe we have them here and somebody can come rent nets. So if they know that they're gonna go use those courts. From what we're hearing, a lot of, like Ryan said, a lot of people have their own net. So they might be able to just take their own nets to those courts and play themselves. And we can do it.
They carry their own nets.
I have one. I know they play pickleball there. Get your net. Okay, yeah. They're only, they're only a hundred, a hundred fifty dollars. So most players have their own nets.
Oh, wow. I had no idea. So.
Yeah, so there's a couple of options. I would, like we said, we could buy a couple and and have them rent them out so that we know that they'll bring them back because they'll have a deposit or something like that, or some kind of combination of both. So.
A lot of Pleasantly, they're, they're nets from being stolen.
Theirs are permanent.
Theirs are permanently placed.
So this is not an alternative to the pickleball courts? We're still building the pickleball courts?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So how are these scheduled now? Do people actually just show up and play tennis or do they?
Yes, so they're just.
So it's first come, first served?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and that was some of the discussions that me and Councilmember Barker talked about as well as that there's, you know, there's a bunch of options we could do there too.
This isn't a statistical sample according to Councilmember Barker's methodology either. I would assume that one tennis court would be adequate. I hardly ever see anybody playing tennis. So if we're concerned about the net being stolen, what, why don't we do this permanently? Because frankly, we're gonna have two or three courts over Loma View or four. That's not gonna be enough of the demand we have. So I'm wondering, Council, if we could consider this thinking is permanent, if that's our, our whole.
And if, and if that's something you guys are looking into, we have all the pricing because of Loma View. So we can get that to you quickly. Approximately, so the whole court at Loma View is about fourteen thousand dollars to do the whole court. So.
The surfacing.
The surfacing, yeah, sorry. Yes, the, to surface it. And then the nets were another four hundred or something like, so. I mean, we can give you an idea of if we're putting two, two sets of nets and half the court, you're probably between ten and twelve thousand dollars somewhere there. I mean, just depending on when they come out and do it. So. It's something that that's, that you're interested in.
I, I think it's a great idea. There's so much demand for pickleball. And people are, you know, anything that can get people outside and recreating and physical activity, association, let's, let's do it. I do want to keep at least one tennis court because there are still people that want to play tennis. They're gonna be really disappointed if we take them all away. But I think this is, this is great just to start until the other ones get finished. So that, might you send us?
Councilmember Swanson, how are we gonna pay for it? That's a good question, given how tight our budget already is for next year. What's the proposal for, say, twelve or thirty thousand dollars?
That's why one of our, that's sorry. One of our suggestions was use temporary nets or have them bring their own. Because then now you're paying for his. Right now the courts aren't pretty, I mean, the surface is fine for pickleball right now, tennis courts. So Eric looked at it and said it should be fine and just paint lines.
So we wouldn't have to do all the, the other surfacing, just paint lines? How would we cover up the lines that are already there?
No. I, if you're gonna do temporary, you just leave, you, multiple sports courts have multiple lines on them. Do different colors for tennis and pickleball.
There's, there's actually currently pickleball lines on this court. Each tennis court has pickleball lines, but the nets are taller in tennis than pickleball. So real players don't use it.
No.
Are you a real player?
No.
Ryan, it's.
Real, yeah, a pickleball player won't play on a tennis net because it's too high.
Right.
Right, right, Chris?
Councilmember Dowpass, we've got a comment. I know there are some youth tennis lessons, especially in the summer. And I don't know if they generally use one court or two courts, but there definitely is some use. Probably not as much as it used to be back in the day. I'm pretty sure that that citizen that I know is, is going to do tennis lessons is planning on it and it's a first come for some, first come, first served scenario. So sometimes they'll go over to Weaver High if, if it's not available, but I am a little worried about rushing on it. And, you know, maybe if we just be patient and wait for the pickleball courts to come, that it'll just come together when it comes together. I, I just don't know enough about how, how many hours they use it, how consistent it is. I know it's at least once a week. And so my concern is we'll get someone that's disappointed about it. I just don't know. Probably more people happy about pickleball than tennis though, because it seems to be going in that direction. But just want to be mindful that there are people that have used it.
All right, so where are we on this, Council? Do you want to go the temporary round? And let's see if we can raise some funds to do the permanent or what to activity. I'd like to see if we can raise the funds and go to permanent round. There, there's no question that they'll get used. No question that they, they will be used from sunup to sundown. And I, I think having a couple more courts in addition to what we're doing over it. Excuse me, Loma View Park. Will we benefit the city? Is this a solution we can maybe try? Is let's go ahead with the temporary. I think it's a couple hundred bucks or something. I mean, every hundred is significant. And then combine this with raise, trying to raise money for the overall pickleball activity that we we have. That way it's kind of a combo. Could we do that? You all right with that? Councilmember Severn, you all right with that? Okay, let's, I saw some shaking of the heads. Did I see a shaking of the head to try?
Yes, I, I just, it came up so quickly on the agenda. I didn't know anything about it until tonight. And I just have a few people that I personally know that play tennis. And so I it's like they aren't getting a chance to be heard on it. So I just don't want to rush it. But temporary doesn't seem like there's much of a problem with that if it's just putting down lines. So seems, it seems okay.
Okay, let's go that route then. So thanks, Councilmember Barker for bringing that up to us. We'll now go into our council of department reports. Here first, Councilmember Dowpass, if he has issues he'd like to discuss on building and planning. Swanson will give us a plan that's report.
Great, thank you. This is the earliest I've ever done a report, just throwing it out there. We are currently hiring a full-time planner. So if anyone in your network knows of anyone, please have them apply. We have had at least a couple that have applied so far. But it is still open and we are still seeing billing permits for single-family homes that are in, in the process of being processed and, and applied for. So Scott even has a little bit of a queue that he's working through right now. And I know he's anxious to get a planner to help him through that. And then I have just a quick update on some of the revenue information for both planning and billing. Uh, this is a year-to-date comparison for last year's fiscal year and this year's fiscal year. Uh, last year through this time of this year, which we only have about a month left in the fiscal year, we were at thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars in plan checks, in planning fees. And this year we are at twenty-four thousand, two hundred and five. So we're about twenty thousand dollars less than, actually about fifteen thousand dollars less than last year. So we're trending definitely in a lighter direction this year. As far as the billing numbers go, these are both compared fiscal year last year versus this year. First of all, I will just throw out that on the budget, the projected revenue for building in last year's fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, we had a budget of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This year, we had a projected budget of five hundred thousand dollars. The only reason we had a higher projected budget is we, this all happened right before interest rates were really starting to do a, a high climb. And so we have nothing to indicate that things were gonna be as, as bad as they are. And so this year, in this year's budget, we are going to have a projected budget of four hundred thousand dollars in billing permits. So we went from four fifty to five hundred this year to four hundred next year is what we're, we're trying to be, we hope that's conservative. But last year, year-to-date, to this point of last year's fiscal year, we have four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in billing permit revenues. This year, year-to-date, up through this date as well, we have two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in revenue. So we are about a hundred and fifty-five thousand shy of where we were at, at this, this point last year. We are very hopeful that some of the larger projects that are ongoing right now will either be at the very end of this fiscal year, which will help with the bump in the budget this year. Or it will come front-loaded at the beginning of next year's fiscal year. So just, it will come, it's just coming trickling in. But as Scott has noticed, billing permits are surprisingly, you know, staying a little bit consistent right now.
Any questions for Councilmember Dowpass on that report? All right, thank you. Councilmember Swanson, what would you like to report this evening? Well, I have nothing to report. We haven't heard anything from the state on our current, on March sales tax information. The trends within departments continue to hold where they are spending less than their budgets. Which we can always count on our departments for. I'm grateful for that. So I'm asking to be put on the next council meeting's agenda with a finance report so that we can have an idea at that point, whether or not we're in our third month of declining sales tax trends, or if we've seen a rebound, or just exactly what's going on. There's a lot of depending on who you talk to and who you listen to out there, there's neutral news. There's a few people that still have some positive news and there's a whole bunch that don't have positive predictions. Depending on what happens in the next nine days or so with the debt ceiling could have a major impact in sales tax revenue and in the economy, not just nationally, but globally. So there's a lot that will happen between now and our next meeting in two weeks that will better inform a report from the finance department. Yeah, I think we're all aware that food assistance was cut back at the end of the pandemic. So that's probably heading back on the major contributor of sales tax in our city, which is grocery. I've asked John to share with the council some of the details of where sales tax are coming from, our major contributors to see if we're seeing down trends. I understand the report we get does show where the sales tax is coming from. And I think, John, you were indicating about forty percent of what sales tax comes from.
From food sales and stuff?
Sales.
Yeah.
So we can start seeing a little bit more trends on where the sales tax are coming from. We're seeing significant decreases there. I did share with Councilmember Swanson also, so it was done by the Los Angeles Regional Council. They're anticipating sales tax in the state will decline about two point three percent this year. And in our area, it was the closest one we get is South Alvin. They were estimated to have a reduction in their collection of sales tax. So it'll be interesting to see. We'll get this for the report. So any other comments or questions for Councilmember Swanson? All right, we'll move on to item number nine. The traditional public comments. If you'd like to comment, I'd invite you up to the podium again. You state your name, Mr. Reson, with no problem. And with your comments to no longer than five minutes.
Brenda Ashdown, I live in North Alvin. I hope you can listen fast. I don't want to step on anybody's toes. We did do a lot of discussion at the budget committee, which was terribly interesting. And I recommend, if any of you get questions, I'm sure you already have had this in training, but if any of you get questions from, from residents, refer them to those YouTube videos that we did. They were all recorded. We asked questions on everything that we didn't understand. And I would just like to make a little bit of clarification on the presentation. The hundred and eleven thousand dollars that was over budget was because of decisions of this council. And five thousand was from Chocotop because last year was supposed to be the last year. And twenty-five thousand was extra money that you gave to Cherry Days over what their original budget was told they would have. And seventy-five thousand dollars for the amphitheater was supposed to be collected and donated from the city and citizens. So that, that's the budget. There was one other that was six thousand dollars. I don't remember that was. The second drone where the police chief said he had half of it donated and you kept it in the budget anyway. So that was an extra six thousand dollars that went into your budget. And now I, I'm hearing tonight that you're wanting to do another ten, twelve thousand dollars for pickleball, but it's not in the budget. I'm sure that with, because of my comments tonight, I will not be asked to sit on the budget committee again next year. Which is fine, because I have no problem. You know, I've been here for years. I have no problem telling you what I think in meeting. Now I have a question. If a developer makes promises to homes that were already there before they developed a new subdivision and that developer does not follow through with the promises made, is there anything the city council can do about that?
I'll deflect that. I think I know the answer, but I'll deflect that to our city attorney.
Only if it's in a development agreement. So anything other than that would have to be civil, civilly resolved.
Okay, so how, how do I find a development agreement? Is it in the development agreement, what the developer promises to current residents?
Not usually.
So they just come in and make promises and the residents say, oh, this is a great idea. I'm thrilled to have this new subdivision. And then when that developer's done, they walk away. They didn't get their fence. They didn't get their road. They didn't get their yards. There's, that doesn't seem quite fair to me.
Well, usually development agreements don't deal with that type of stuff. We don't, we don't speculate, we don't specify those type of things.
Just a matter of the developer going to the neighbors and saying, this is what I will do for you. And in the end, they don't.
Well, so it, it, with, with real estate stuff, if it's not in writing, it's not enforceable. And so that's the issue is that we need, if things need to be put in development agreements for rezones and things like that, then the council should put those in the development agreement because then there's some teeth and there's something there. But if it's specifically, if it's an entitled type of subdivision, it's an R one eight zone and they're putting in an R one eight. We normally, we wouldn't do development agreements with that. And so it's this, if there's just some nuances in that sort of thing.
So the only thing that can be done in that situation is litigation. So the only thing that can be done in that situation is litigation.
And, and.
And then it's just a matter of what you said, what you told me personally, and that comes written down.
And most of the time, that won't be, it won't be very successful. If it's not written down in real estate, it doesn't happen.
So um, but it's not required for a developer to write down what they promised to existing neighbors, just the development that they um, make.
Just the promises, it's only the promises that are made to the city council that are included in the development agreement, so. That's, if it's not written down, then it's not considered a promise that's under any sort of obligation.
Uh, I get you. Is there any way that, that can be changed so that when the developers do make promises to citizens, there can be some accountability?
So i, if, that we cannot require every developer under state code to use a development agreement. But those where there are being promises made in exchange for rezones, then the council can require anything to be put into a development agreement. It's just a, it's a bargain for exchange.
Well, it's a rezone of the property that was used, but not a rezone of the existing residents. And they were told, you know, you'll get a new fence, you'll get a new yard, you'll get all of these things, and in the end. But the development's been turned over to the city, it's been accepted, and there's still, there's no fences, no rocks, no yard.
So they, the, the council can in the development agreement include off-site improvements, which would include. Things to other property owners and things like that as well.
So then the lesson learned is if somebody's gonna build something next to you, you come to the city and say, these people are promising me this, can you put it in the development agreement?
Or you get it in writing yourself from the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments this evening?
First comment I didn't write down, it's just my wife telling me how boring that was at the beginning, so. She, I mean, so I mean, if that, that tells you anything, the person that made the briefing, she couldn't get through slide three before she said that. So, that's, I mean, and that's probably just a one statistic, but. That's probably a lot of the citizenship was just too much, anyway. So, I, I was doing something else and I just wondered if, so does the city actually have a city forester? That was something I saw in the code, I was doing something outside, just, because there's actually a, a city or a tree ordinance. A tree ward, is that something we still do or?
We, so we, we lost that person, but we've been working on getting a new person recertified as the certified arborist.
Okay, and that's not their full-time, that's just.
It was just something interesting, yeah.
Implication that they have, that, so you know, we don't have a full-time forester.
And um, I guess the one thing, there's a couple of things that. Safety-wise, on uh, I guess it's kind of the nexus of the universe, because thirty-five, thirty-five fifty, and then there's uh, thirty-five fifty north. As well, comes into it, I don't know if you know that T, but it's, there's a major hump in thirty-five fifty, and so you can't see either way. I didn't know if there was a way to put a mirror or something to see, because my son's come through there every day and it's always a. Go type of thing, and it uh, it's always been a, um. My wife's always asking me to ask about it, so there.
Where's this thirty-five fifty north?
And thirty-five fifty north, it comes up and it hits it right at a T, it doesn't go any further up, so it's kind of like in between thirty-five.
Approximately five hundred east, five fifty.
Uh, no, in between thirty, um, five seventy-five east and six hundred east, it comes right up in between there, from the south. So, anyway, it's, it's brutal trying to look to the west, you can't see anything, there's a dip and. All of a sudden you see a car and it's too late, you're there, anyway. Just something to think about, um, and then some specific items, there's been a, a trailer that's been sitting up north of the Hollis residence. For a long time, um, they were thinking it's a poacher because they. All of a sudden see deer shot in the reservoir and stuff like that, and it just sits there, and I, as I walk with a new connection of that road up there. You can see it just sitting up on the side of the hill, I haven't called on it yet, but it's one of those things that. We need to do something about, but the other thing in front of the house is, is Walt's weeds, as I call them, uh, because. He just doesn't do anything about it, now there, the uh. Infectious weeds that are getting there are just going nuts, so I just implore the city to kind of keep pushing on him to. Actually do what he's supposed to do and, and clear that, so. Um, I think that was it.
Alright, thanks Chris.
Uh, no raised hands.
I'd be interested in some feedback of you folks on what we gave to you. Not necessarily right now, obviously you have to digest what we've said and given to you, but uh, I think it would be appropriate. Maybe in a week or two, or, but, but at some point, tell us what you think of this, uh, your recommendations, you know? That'd be good to actually have one final meeting in the weekend, sit down and chat about it, not a huge thing to report. Thank you. Thank you. Alright, anyone else to see? Right, closed public comments, but I have number ten, um, you have some staff with us tonight, staff, do you have any? Comments?
I'm gonna budget to replace these chairs.
That might happen, not necessarily because of this, but could move on to the. Mr. Call, you have a comment?
I do have two things, council, uh. First off, those of you, we are getting more questions from residents about sprinkler systems. And other issues, the impark strips where All West has been working on their fiber thing. Um, as you know, All West wasn't contracted by the city or otherwise engaged to do this work for us. They're just like any other contractor, and so everything should be handled with them and their contractors. I'm gonna give you their phone number so you can save it in your phones and pass it on when you get those phone calls. Uh, it's eight oh one, five two zero, three zero, seven, three. That's five two zero, three zero, seven, three. And that way, you can just forward it on or give it to the person who calls you, and that's their kind of helpline. The people that'll come out and fix landscaping, sprinklers, things like that. Um, they are moving very quickly, uh, they'll be through the city by August, September. So, um, and then it sounds like they will start actually doing the connections to homes in October. So as people sign up, they'll come in and just start connecting homes, so. Um, look for that, and then. I think Dave and I were talking, we'll want to have a discussion about the city's no-fault insurance policy. If you remember, that's if there's a flood of a basement or things, sewer water. That the city, we have money that's just in a fund that we can then apply to help get things fixed. Um, as best we can, I think our current limit is forty-five hundred or maybe five thousand, and we just want to review that with the council. Uh, we're not necessarily aware of like, there's a major issue, we did have a basement flood recently from a sewer issue. Um, and we just want to talk it through, we haven't even got the estimate back on that waiting yet, and we're hoping it'll be low enough, but we're just. Want to talk it through, um, and just make sure that we're still on the right path with that one for you. Um, and those are the two things I had.
John, uh, brief update on any flooding issues in the city or concerns?
So as you all know, Orton Park overflowed. Um, and it's been, it's been out and full for a week now. Uh, we are not encouraging people to swim or kayak, people are doing that. Um, but it is a basin that's, that's shallow enough, meaning that the water depth is shallow enough that we aren't required to put a fence around it, so. We also can't necessarily keep people out of it. And so, but we're not encouraging people to do it. Um, and then as you get up on the north side of the city, we're still seeing water coming from weird places. Um, over by Ben Lomond Park, for example, there's a, or Longview Park. Uh, there's a kind of a weird little sinkhole that just came up under one of the sidewalks and things, and the only thing we can figure is it's a. It's an underground water flow that's just moving dirt around and. Um, and so, and then, but everywhere that we've been, had concerns where the, you know, water levels were creeping up. Uh, nothing has exceeded the banks yet, we're still keeping an eye on lots of stuff, there's still a lot of water in the hills. Um, it doesn't, you can't see it as much because now it's up on the high flatter areas as opposed to the steep faces. Um, so we're still encouraging people to not take sandbags out in certain areas and things, although if people do have sandbags, they don't need. If they haven't touched any water, other than rainwater, then they can use them in their yard, you know. It's a great way to help level your lawn, if you spread it around and rake it out. And then throw the bags in your dumpster, if it has held, held back floodwater, the EPA says it needs to be handled differently. And we're at the green waste pit, gonna have an area where they can dump those, and then um. And then throw the bags away up there, uh, they'll still have to pay for a permit to come, you know, with the entry fee and stuff, but. Uh, generally, we're not picking up every single sandbag in the town, so, uh, just encourage people to dispose of them themselves. And we've been, we've been really good, the, the lack of rain has been super helpful. This, as it's really warmed up, we haven't had that excessive rain, which has then sped up all the, all the stuff and. Hopefully, at this point, we've, we've avoided what happened in eighty-three, which was the three days of rain that just caused everything to come down the hill at once. So.
None of my stream long, non- grown. Seven said they lived there for forty years, that's only the second time they've seen that breach down there, so lots of water. Okay, council, any comments you have?
Um, just to emphasize what John called was talking about with All West and the repairs for sprinkling. I had a citizen reach out to me yesterday, I reached out to Dave and Joan for a phone number, I wanted to call them myself just to. You know, express, uh, we had some citizens calling about it. And the guy at the, the number five two zero, something, something, I was actually gonna forward it to everybody, that was part of my staff comment, but. Maybe it just do that, that's okay, uh, but he was incredibly helpful. So I was very comfortable forwarding that phone number to the, to the citizen who had contacted me. And he was very enthusiastic, and so that's a, that's a great resource for us, if you have anything to go. And if you want me to, I can even forward you all that contact information as well.
Anyone else? Councilmember Swanson? Uh, just a shout out again to the committee, you guys were awesome. I think a lot was learned about the budget. Uh, even above and beyond, for those of you that are regular attenders, above and beyond what you already knew. It's a pretty amazing process that goes on behind the scenes to get to the budget. Every year, to get to a balanced budget, to minimize, if there is a tax increase, to minimize it, to avoid it if at all possible, and all of those kinds of things. And Brenda, if I have any say in it, uh, we'll be on the committee next year. Bye. Thank you. I, I hope the, well, the main message is that comes from this exercise we went through is the. Transparency that we're all trying to make sure is available. The city, this is your city, you elected us to represent you, but um. I hope the spirit of transparency is evident. In this, so. Okay, with nothing else, then I would look for a motion to adjourn.